She wants the event. But you might not go to it.
That's right.
You know, um. That would be good because uh Cedric is graduating. And she was she was there basically as a junior, but she was a freshman, so she could get all of them.
Yeah.
So, so you you gotta come in. There. As long as you get.
Yeah.
She's working for the line.
Yeah.
She wants.
Yeah, that's always.
Yeah, but the thing is.
You're right.
Now, are we up and running? Alright folks, I will go ahead and call this meeting at seven P M. If we could start with a moment of silence, please. And I'll stand for a pleasure.
And I'd like to believe in. And to the Republic for which is famous, one nation under God, and the best of with liberty and justice for all.
So we can remind folks, you have cell phones with you to either turn them off, put them on silent. Council members, please make sure that they are off the desktops. City clerk, do we take roll call first, please?
Council member William. Reed. Jackson. Here. Lawler. Here. Davis.
Pleasant.
Brian.
Here.
And there's.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda?
So move.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Right? Presentations and recognitions. The first is a proclamation for our Red Ribbon Week, say that recon fast. Proclamation for our Red Ribbon Ribbon Week, October twenty third to the thirty first, twenty twenty two. Whereas Red Ribbon Week founded in nineteen eighty five as the oldest and largest drug prevention campaign in the country. And whereas Red Ribbon Week began as a way to honor Special Agent Enrique Camarena, who lost his life in the fight against drugs and the DEA's effort to reduce demand for drug supervision and education programs. Whereas Red Ribbon Week is nationally recognized and celebrated by wearing red ribbons and badges. And whereas Red Ribbon Week serves as a vehicle for communities and individuals to take a stand for the hopes and dreams of our children through our personal commitment to live drug-free lives, with the ultimate goal being the creation of a drug-free America. Now therefore, be it resolved, I Victoria Garcia Snyder, Mayor on behalf of the Albion City Council, do proclaim October twenty third through the thirty first, twenty twenty two as Red Ribbon Week and urge all American citizens to make a commitment to live a drug-free life. Alright, next. We also have Willie Tab here to give us a presentation of our Albion Community Gardens. And will Dr. Franzen be joining you on this presentation? So you're both free to come on up.
Really not a presentation, because unless you want me to go into detail about what we do, okay. First of all, my name is Willie Tab. I live at five Coventry Lane, Albion, Michigan. I'm Vice President of Albion Community Gardens. This is Trish Branson. She is our master gardener. So any at any time if going through this this information, if you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to to address them. But I know how busy you are. I don't want to go on and linger on to information that that you already know. So I know it's hard to to say what I assume, but the Albion Community Garden started back in the spring of nineteen two thousand, excuse me, two thousand seventeen. And we started off with three sites. One site being the Albion and Erie Street. The second site being the main site, Jefferson Street, and the third site being on the corner of Pearl and Sinister. We had what we call spigots, as as your water department calls them. Those are nothing more than ways that we can go on and water our our garden. During that time, we we were having meetings with the city manager at that time was Cheryl Mitchell. And the meetings were based around how do we pay for the water that we use during our garden water? We came up with a preliminary agreement. We got it. And we as a committee had several issues that we just could not resolve, okay, with the city. And one being the the amount of water that we use versus just water in a sewage. And from that, I met with city manager Mitchell. And we struck a what we call a memorandum of understanding. I passed out some information to you. You'll see that. And we came up with a number and amount of like sixty five dollars and some cents per quarter for each spigot, which at that time we had three spigots. One for each site. And that memorandum memorandum of understanding expires November of twenty two, which is right around the corner here. And the reason I'm here this evening is to see if I can appeal to your great judgment to give us another five years either at a better rate or at the existing rate that we have. And I'm saying I'm gonna say like sixty three dollars, okay? So far, what we've done so far with the spigots that have were installed at each site, they were all done by the city at the cost that we paid to the city water department to go on and do that. Each spigot at that time was roughly about what did I put down here? Sixty dollars. And since the time of two thousand and seventeen, there was a a new standard or requirement to to purchase a hydrant that had a backflow unit on it. That's rent freezing and whatnot. That unit twelve hundred dollars across. So we went from sixty dollars to twelve hundred dollars, which we paid for, okay? And we installed it as well as ran the line and it's gone on our Jefferson Street site. It ran about ninety feet of PEX line to connect to the the water line of the city. Which we paid at a considerable cost, but I mean, okay. With what we do, it's it's really important that we have that that second water supply at the Jefferson Street site. I'm not sure if you you read, you know, read the papers and just put in a which now we can go on and raise our plants as well as raising vegetables throughout the winter. And we like to use that hydrant to go on and as far as water. So tonight, what I like to to recommend is that that you give us an agreement for five years at a rate of sixty three dollars per quarter. And it's all spelled out here that with the two that we'll probably only be using it from May to November. And that would be at the Pearl and Sinner Street site and one at the Justin Street site. The Albion and Erie Street site is no longer. We sold that. So we're we no longer have that site. So that'd be two with the spigots and the one that we installed, the the new hydrant on Jefferson Street will be three. So we dropped the Albion and Erie Street, but we picked up the the second one at our Jefferson Street site. Since we paid for the installment of the hydrant as well as the line going to the 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 street, we also paid for the hookup to that line. We'll we'll bear the price for that as well. You'll see the the amounts that with those three two spigots and one hydrant will generate far as the city water, it's roughly a little over five hundred dollars, okay? But if you can see fit, we like to reduce our costs because that'll be a fixed cost for us. We operate as a a nonprofit organization. And all monies that we get will all help, we all volunteer to donations. If you have any questions, I I will answer them at this time. But your favorable consideration is appreciated, and I thank you for this opportunity.
So Mr. Tab, the the hydrant?
Yes.
When was that purchased?
That was purchased in two thousand seventeen, excuse me, two thousand and twenty two, it's early part of the year.
So earlier, just earlier this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
What we did is we we had the city purchase it for us and they kept it at their water department until we we had someone to go on and install it for us.
Okay. I was just wondering if it's been sitting there for a couple of years. I wasn't sure.
Well, we this effort has been long. It's been a long process, okay, because of all the changes that you've had in government. And I every time I I I think I'm moving in the right direction, I'm dealing with a different person, okay? And so it's been kind of taxing, say at least, okay?
So is it a necessity to have that done before the winter months arrive or just do you have water supply to grow what you need right now?
With the other spigot, but I I'm afraid that if we don't have that backup system, okay? Far as a new hydrant, which is a D and Q requirement, there's a possibility of that there's no backflow protection there, that that line may be filled up with water and if it fills up, it needs first line. With a new hydrant, it prevents that from happening.
Didn't vote a half.
And I met with Mr. Tab last Friday to discuss this. And after discussing it with the city attorney, he felt that it was important that the council make this decision, not a city manager decision really, since you set the water rates. So that's why I asked Mr. Tab to come tonight, give you this information, and then we could add it as a future agenda item for the next meeting. And that's what you so chose to do along those lines. But I'm really looking for direction from the council here, so.
Attorney Hartness.
So, you know, my suggestion would be when you bring this up at a future meeting, the way that our ordinances read is everyone that uses water service in the city is required to have a meter except where the department exempts them and the department is the Department of Public Works and through the city manager. So people can be exempt from the requirement of having a meter, which is what I think has been done with this particular group in the past. But what I would suggest for the purposes of uniformity is that the council in conjunction with the Public Works Department, develop on our schedule of water fees for those groups or individuals that are exempted from the meter requirement, have a set fee so that it can be applied to all groups in the same fashion so that we're not doing it arbitrarily. That would be my suggestion.
Yes.
I work with food distribution on Tuesdays and they've been very good about donating fresh vegetables to the boxes that we distribute.
Thank you. I would make that motion. There's no motion.
No motion.
It's just a.
Just a.
Okay, we'll do that at the end of the meeting, but.
Mary Beth Jackson?
I mean, I think it's a very good idea because we do have the ladies that go around and water the plants as well. And when I thought about this, I was like, whoa, let's not exempt anyone from being able to get water as well. So I would agree with putting it on to another agenda item, give us chance to dig up more information so that we are accommodating all our needs of individuals that need and use water this way.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam. Would you like to speak to how much food you guys donated this year?
We are probably three thousand pounds better.
Three thousand pounds?
Yes.
That's great.
Since we've been designated as a food desert and as you know, if you go to Family Fair buying produce here is is a really big challenge for for some families right now. And with the two sites that we have, we have vegetable that we put out during harvest season daily. And at first they were, I've lived here all my life and I know most of the people that come and get those vegetables. Now we're seeing a different set of people coming to get those vegetables. It's no longer ones that we kind of expected to see because of
Everybody's impacted, right? I said, everybody's impacted, right?
Yes.
Alright, well, we thank you for coming to the point to give this information. Now, I think it's unanimous that we would bring this up at our agenda or.
It could be November.
Make a decision. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, so we do have a public hearing that has been posted that we, for us, so we will open up our public hearing at seven seventeen. At this time, if we have anybody within chambers that would like to address counsel pertaining to this item, which is ordinance twenty twenty two oh seven for the marijuana district overlay. If anybody would like to come forward, you have three minutes. Okay, I will go ahead and close our public hearing at seven eighteen. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty two oh seven?
So move.
Support.
Alright, Attorney Hartness, are you gonna give us information on this?
Sure. So this is an ordinance that you've seen before. It's an identical form. The reason it's before you again is because it was identified that when the public notice went out, like the planning commission level, there was apparently an error on the on the notice. That notice has been corrected, but I felt it was just in the interest of thoroughness that this go through the process again. So that's what's been done. The ordinance is unchanged.
Do we have any questions for our attorney?
Now that he has answered the question regarding overlay and the significance of the importance of understanding overlay, I feel comfortable.
City clerk, do we go?
Council member Reed. Yes. Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
And there's.
Yes. Public comments. At this time, anybody who lives in within the gallery has the opportunity to come forward and address counsel in regards to any agenda item. Would you like to state your name and your address?
Maurice Berry, two fifteen East Marbury.
Good afternoon, Mark White Frost, five twenty West Cass Street, precinct two. Andrea Strong, seven twenty West Cass Street, apartment thirteen.
So our our question is, we were kind of confused. We were here to receive the proclamation for Red Ribbon Week and you read it. And we wasn't sure. We were supposed to stand up and receive it or?
Yeah, on the phone or he wants some. So I can go ahead and sign it.
Okay. And we were gonna read the meaning of Red Ribbon, but you didn't. So eloquent, so. So when everybody got that.
Now, was there anything else that you would like to state for the purpose of the significance of this week?
Oh, I think it's very important. As a lot of you know, my past, I worked diligently to help the youth in drug prevention. And I think this is a good program. I've implemented some of the strategies that they have on the website that was attached to the school. So I just think it's a great honor to be able to represent this along with my colleagues and be a part of that.
And Mark White or Andrea, you want to add anything else?
Now, just thank you so much for recognizing. It's very important that we show a united front for a young kid to know that drugs are not the answer. And we do a lot of the work on the streets, but it's also a welcoming thing that the city embraces this as well. And we may be back in October during that week to give you guys something to help represent that. But Subs Abuse Prevention Council has always been working against drugs, alcohol and things like that. And all of us have been touched by it at some point in our lives. And so we definitely appreciate the council taking this as an important step through the city.
Well, on behalf of the city, we do appreciate each and every one of you, the hard work that you put in to serve the community of Albion. I know that, you know, that it's a lot of undertaking to get that message out. So we appreciate you for what you all do. So I will go ahead and stand and give this to you all. Alright, anybody else would like to stand and address counsel? Just one more time with anybody on?
Oh, wait.
Okay. We don't have any for closed session right now. Alright, consent calendar, any packets? You had the minutes for the October third study session and the October third regular session minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Support. Any questions or concerns? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Do I have a motion to approve of the annual M M L dues?
So move.
Support. Alright. City manager, Kim. You want to talk about this or?
The dues are based on our population size. It's gone down since our last time we dated it because of the change in population. It's something that the city doesn't write on a basis.
And four of you are gonna be using it.
And I we will give you a better update on my ability of keeping.
Do we have any questions in regards to the M M L dues?
So with, I'm sorry. Yeah, so with these dues, I see that there were three more programs that were added to it. So we are able to be a part of those as well. Because I know with this amount of six thousand, three hundred and something dollars, it doesn't include us when we go get ready to go to any meetings or any.
I think we get it. It's kind of a big number.
Okay.
So we do take someone here. And then there are a lot of things that we do for, there are a lot of policies that we give in the M M L, big numbers for public services and public safety.
Now, that's the bigger picture. Okay.
There's a lot of.
Okay, that's good to know because what we don't normally do, which I believe we should do, is we don't allocate enough money for the year for anyone that wants to go to some of the meetings that they have and we have to come back and do that. So that's what that was one of my concerns. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Does this grant us certain access, like ask council members to the website? Other than just?
That I can't really answer. I don't know. I know we get extra access to it through the different forums and things that they have on it that you wouldn't have access to otherwise. For council will have that same access.
Okay.
Kind of do that with questions.
Yeah, you know, when I talked with someone today regarding the conference starting tomorrow, it, you know, going to the M M L website because she said, go there and you'll find everything you need. So I think by going there as a member, you should be able to access basically what you want. And the telephone number is there too.
Okay.
So the six thousand dollars gets us something, at least it gets us access.
There are certain levels of membership, I think, as well, that get you different accesses. Yes, Attorney Hartness?
I I will. My understanding is we're we're general members, the general membership, and I can email a link to council right now that will give you all the benefits that the that we get from the league.
Thank you.
Of the membership.
That's what we would, thank you so.
Thank you.
Yes. Like I said, I think the basic package. They have to put in this. Any other? We don't have information.
This is membership out of the ass.
And I think most municipalities in the state are members of the MML.
City clerk, can we go?
Council member Reed, yes. Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
David? Yes.
Yes.
William?
Yes.
And Mary's.
Yes. Future agenda items. Any topics?
Yeah. Water, they get water rates for the community garden group and the rest of the city is, so as, as suggested by our attorney, uh, so that we are fair and unbiased and consistent across the board.
Any other topics?
Yes. Um, I don't know if we need to make this a, um, actual agenda item, but if we could have access to, um, the grant writers that work for like a list, grant writers that were used in the past or recently, um, so that when we come across different grants, we don't have to scramble necessarily to find, um, different grant writers that we possibly could utilize for different things here in the community. I think just having that information could cut a little bit out of, um, the work of finding someone to put in for that funding.
Yeah, I'll have to check with Haley if we've had any other people write grants. I know Devon has done a couple since she's been here. Um, we did pay somebody to do the assistance to firefighter grants last year. Um, which, so I have, I have that information, but I'll check with Haley to see.
Yeah. Like I said, it's not necessarily something that we necessarily need to put in here. You know what I mean?
But we have contact information for.
Exactly. Less short in the steps.
Anything else? All right. Public comments. If we have anybody in the gallery that would like to stand to address counsel, you have three minutes and you have opportunity to do so at this point.
Good evening. My name is Kena Williams. I live at four one four North Huron in Alvin. I'm here tonight in response to council member French's call for candidates to present themselves to council. I am running for mayor and I would just like to encourage everyone to participate in the candidate forum this Thursday at Southern Park Elementary School and to remember to vote on November eighth.
What time, what time?
Seven.
We know that.
Anybody else? We have anybody here? All right. City manager report in your packet. We have the report that the manager, Kip, has provided us. Do we have any questions in regards to the information from the packet?
What's he gonna say?
I was gonna read it.
Yeah. Maybe I'll write on that package, please. He's ready for it. If you want to read, go ahead.
Uh, I met with the NAACP. I met with, with the NAACP regarding the incident at the festival. Uh, we reviewed video footage of that incident, discussed, uh, some future options with you involving youth violence in the community. We're also working on a community forum in the next couple of months. I'm not sure. We, we've been trying to set one up for National Faith and Blue Weekend, which is actually this coming weekend, I believe. Um, and it's been difficult to get everything set up with everything that's going on in the community currently. So, uh, we might be looking a little further into November for that. Um, they were overall, uh, there, there was little concern for the officers' actions and they felt the officers performed well, uh, maybe not taking enough action at times was the issue rather than too much. Um, we did a monthly check with the end of, or the MEDC, uh, this last week, uh, that match on main grant that we spoke about at the last, uh, the last time I gave a manager report. We've got two businesses that are interested in the grant, uh, and he's, he's working on their applications at this time. Um, I believe it is Annis Flowers and the new restaurant. And I don't remember the name.
Filazio's?
Yeah. Um, and then I spent an hour with two different groups from Ford Institute discussing our city government with them.
Do we have any questions for city manager, Kip?
Can you briefly touch on what the new parking ticket program is?
Uh, the account, the council actually approved the purchase of that in August of twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Um, it has taken us a year to get it all online and actually working. Um, previously we were doing paper tickets, which was a file of paper and very difficult to track. This is all electronic now. Um, the officers can do it pretty quick on a, uh, phone, face a smartphone, basically. Um, and we can track the tickets now, which means we can make sure they get paid and do what we have to do. Make sure they're all taken care of.
And all the printers work with all the phones?
Yep. Last I knew. The hard part was figuring out that if the Bluetooth on the phone is connected, the computer does not work with the printers. We figured that one out too.
Thank you.
Do we have a parking officer?
No.
So who is going to write?
The officers, officers write the tickets.
Anyone will.
Yeah. All the officers write the tickets. So, yeah.
I just remembered Joanne.
Oh. That's a long.
When she was the parking.
Yeah.
If there's no parking, you can just put parking.
Uh, there's no parking on any city street from two to six AM is one of the main ones that we write for. Plus handicap parking, fire lane violations, no parking zone violations. Too close to curbs. There's about.
Far away from the curb.
Yeah. There's probably twenty-five, thirty, yeah, between twenty-five and thirty citations that we can write, most based on state law. But I think there's five that are based on city ordinance.
Are those on the website?
They're also in the fee schedule every year that we put out.
Do we have any other questions? All right. Council member comments.
I have one, but we can ask you afterwards. It was an email that you sent out, so I can ask you.
Well, I was actually gonna bring that up. Part of comments.
You were.
Yes.
Go ahead. I'll let you do it. He said she's going to bring it up.
Yeah.
My letter.
So I had emailed everybody this afternoon in regards to attorney harness's, um, evaluation. So I'm asking that those be returned to me by Friday so that, that I can get it compiled and ready for our next agenda for our meeting.
The email that I would have sent back was, uh,
for a week?
I'm just saying, I'm bombarded. Yes. It's two weeks, two weeks. You can't get all that. Usually you usually send something out as well that tell us what your firm has done.
Yes, I have that.
And, and we don't have that either. So.
I can get that.
We need more information to be able to, um, do his evaluation in five days, really four.
It's two weeks, not one.
No, but I need to have it some point next week. So can we do a deadline for next Tuesday?
Cause he asked for, for Friday.
For next Tuesday. So it's a full week.
So it just needs to be, you know, anonymous, everybody together. So not just me, but I know I can't, I know I can't get it this.
As long as we get the necessary. Yeah. So I can forward that.
Yeah. When do you get back?
We get that Friday.
Oh, good Lord. Okay. I thought it was just like cheating.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Okay. All right. So then that's good. Yeah. So I didn't realize we have an extra week in there. So next Friday, I will.
Thank you.
Readdress the email to give you until next Friday.
Okay.
Thank you. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Awesome. Um, I had to piggyback with what Chief Kip was talking about with Match on Main. We have two businesses that are interested right now, but we did celebrate, uh, the Match on Main recipient this past year. Um, Yellow Bird Chocolate Downtown. They opened up their garden in the back of their business. It is a very pretty, uh, situation. If you wanted to go and, you know, buy some chocolates, hot chocolate, other things that she sells and sit in the back. There are murals back there that, uh, you can take in, but it's just a nice setting, um, that they have captured back there. I know the weather's kind of crappy, but it's supposed to be getting warmer by the weekend. So Thursday, Friday, Saturday, if we have the opportunity to get down there to see what she's been able to do with the funds, she also has a machine that now allows her to process up to a hundred pounds, did she say, a chocolate, which is going to be a big um, difference for her in regards to her sale. So again, that's something to celebrate as a community. Um, we will have sweets on Superior on Sunday, the thirtieth or trick or treaters. Um, so we will have the downtown area again lined with people, businesses who are giving out treats to the youngsters from one until three. And then from my understanding, the college is going to have their event from five to seven at Victory Park. So at least we're not competing this year, um, with time. So one to three Superior Street, five to seven, the college through Victory Park.
So the neighborhoods. The neighborhood is still by resolution six to eight on the thirty-first.
On the thirty-first.
Yes, Monday. Any other comments? Yeah, there'll be a lot of candy going out. Do I have a motion to adjourn? The board. All in favor, say aye. Seven thirty-nine feet.